Madam Clerk, do you call the roll please?
Dr. Chase.
Here.
Ms. Decatur.
Here.
Ms. Egan.
Here.
Ms. Hazard.
Here.
Ms. Healy.
Here.
Mr. McCosker.
Here.
Ms. Young.
Present.
Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
The color guard will come in to present the colors and the pledge of allegiance.
This is the Mountain View High School Marine Corps JROTC. This is their first time.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic in which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hoorah! Okay, read. Colors. Ready, cut. Oh, there. Left turn.
I'd like to thank the Mountain View JROTC Marine Corps for coming this evening. I believe this is their first appearance at Stafford County. School Board. Mr. Hirons would have appreciated that "hurrah" at the end. I'm sure Dr. Chase does as well. Okay, do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Madam Chair, I have a...I'd like to move a motion to move 1001, approve FY19...this is the information items. FY19-28 Capital Improvement Projects to our off-site February 10th, I believe it is, and where we'll discuss at length the Technical Review Committee, the Oversight Committee, and then all the projects that went before it and how they got about it, if that's okay with the...well, first of all, I need a second. But that was...that's why I want to move that to the off-site. CIP.
I just have a quick question about that, if I may. Are the folks across the street waiting on us for any type of action on this? When is the committee meeting again? And do we...are they waiting for us...on us for anything?
Actually, I talked to Dr. Benson about this today, and he said this would not be an item that would come back to us for action at the next meeting. So I don't think they're waiting on a...
Well, I guess my question is...
Timing is such that if we were to address this at our work session in February, that we would meet the expectations for the kind of supervisors in getting it to them.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Yeah, I guess that...
Yeah, I just wanted to know in case it comes up on Monday, we're having our three-on-three, and I just want to make sure that...
No, that's a good question.
Okay.
That was a good question.
Thank you.
And then, yeah, that would meet the intent of the information look, but it would be an in-detailled information look at the off-site, and then we can bring it right back for action.
Okay, thank you.
Can I get a check with Mr. Haran today about the timing? We're okay?
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. McCosker, second by Ms. Decatur. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. That brings us to awards. I'd like to recognize Dr. Karen Richardson, Executive Director of the Virginia Society for Technology and Education, and Dr. Keith Reeves, Chair of the Board of Directors of the Virginia Society for Technology in Education, for presentation of an award.
Good evening, Madam Chair, School Board members. Dr. Benson, thank you for allowing us to join you this evening to present this award to a member of your leadership team. The Making It Happen Award, sponsored by the International Society for Technology in Education, is a national honor that recognizes leaders who have made significant contributions to the successful integration of technology and education in K-12 schools. In 2017, Board Director Keith Reeves nominated Dr. Jan Strike to receive this award.
Could I ask Dr. Strike to come forward, please?
Good evening, Madam Chair, School Board members, and Dr. Benson. It is a fitting privilege that I am able to return to Stafford, where I began my Virginian teaching career in the early 2000s, and where, in this very building, I met our honoree. I was a music teacher at Garrisonville Elementary, and she saw me presenting adaptive special education techniques in instrumental music to my Stafford colleagues in my first attempt at providing professional development. I was a young teacher, but she saw something in me, a knack for teaching other teachers. Her insight, her encouragement, and collegiality was profound, and forever changed my life and as an educator and leader, as she has with so many of Virginia's career public education leaders. Jan Strike is among the most articulate and capable professionals with whom I have ever had the privilege of working, a genuine asset to the field of educational technology. As you may know, she was one of the primary citations for the earliest crafting of the instructional technology resource teacher model here in Virginia, and her contributions to the field in both practice and in academic theory form a robust girder around which so many of us have built effective careers to love and to teach children. Anytime her name is mentioned among educational technology leaders in the Commonwealth, inevitably people smile and nod affirmatively, as her name is practically synonymous with the quality of work to which we aspire. Dr. Strike's work is more than a testament to her deserving the Making It Happen Award. Her work has consistently made it happen for her students and for her colleagues throughout the entirety of her storied and accomplished career. It is a personal as well as a professional privilege to have supported her most deserving candidacy for this esteemed international honor.
We're sure are lucky to have you with us.
Thank you. We were going to have the Mountain View Girls Field Hockey state champs here tonight, but they weren't able to make it, and Mr. Nichols is going to check with Dr. Stempel to see which of our meetings in February would be most accommodating to their schedules. I recall from when my daughter was in school, the end of February, there were lots of tryouts for the spring sports, so I don't want to interfere with that if...I imagine a lot of these athletes are all-year athletes. So if it's all right with the board, if the first meeting in February meets their schedule better, I'd like to put that on. Traditionally, we don't have awards to the second, but it's the end of the winter sports and beginning of the spring. Is there any problem with that? If that's better, we'll find out from Mr. Nichols later this week. All right, that brings us to recognitions, Virginia School Principals Appreciation Week.
Oh, I'd be very...
Mr. McCosker, would you read the proclamation, please?
Yes, I'd be very happy to read that. Certificate of recognition, by the virtue of the authority vested in the Commonwealth of Virginia and the governor of the Commonwealth of Virginia, there is hereby officially recognized Virginia School Principals Appreciation Week, whereas principals make a significant difference for students and staff every day, impacting the effectiveness of teachers and the achievement of students, and whereas principals serve as the educational leaders who motivate and inspire all members of the school staff and the student body to engage in the learning process, and whereas principals are entrusted with the opportunity and the responsibility of guiding, directing, nurturing, mentoring, and imparting knowledge to our children while they are at school, and whereas the principals work with teachers and staff to set academic standards and push students to excel, and whereas principals must work collaboratively with parents and the community at large to proactively prepare students to be self-reliant and productive citizens, and whereas it is a responsibility of the Commonwealth of Virginia to continue to support and recognize the efforts of school principals who are positively impacting students, who are the future of Virginia, and whereas Virginia School Principals Appreciation Week is an opportunity to recognize the hard work and dedication of Virginia school principals in promoting quality of education for every child. Now therefore, I, Ralph S. Northam, do hereby recognize January 22nd to the 26th, 2018, as Virginia School Principals Appreciation Week in our Commonwealth of Virginia, and I call this observance to the attention of all our citizens.
Thank you, Mr. McCosker. We have a proclamation for Career and Technical Education Month. Ms. Young, would you?
Sure. Yes. Proclamation to designate February as National Career and Technical Education Month, whereas February 2018 has been designated National Career and Technical Education Month, and whereas economic and technological changes in our society are rapidly reflected in the structure and natures of today's workplace, placing new and additional responsibilities on our educational system, and whereas career and technical education is part of the foundation of a strong, well-educated, and modern workforce that fosters productivity in business and industry and contributes to Virginia's leadership in the international marketplace, and whereas through career and technical education, students gain meaningful experience in practical applications of basic skills such as reading, writing, and mathematics, and whereas adults can improve their lives with career and technical education by learning new skills that will provide them with more career choices, expanded earning potential, and greater job satisfaction, and whereas the cooperative and ever-increasing efforts between career and technical educators, administrators, and representatives of business and industry stimulate the growth and vitality of the Virginia economy by preparing citizens for career in high-demand, high-wage, and technologically skilled areas in a global economy, and whereas this year's theme, Celebrate Today, Own Tomorrow, demonstrates the crucial role that career and technical education plays in readying our students for successful careers. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the School Board that February 2018 be recognized as Career and Technical Education Month within Stafford County Public Schools, adopted by the Stafford County School Board on this day, 23rd day of January 2018.
Thank you, Ms. Young. And Dr. Chase, would you read the proclamation for the National School Counseling Week, please?
Sure. Whereas, school counselors are employed in public and private schools to help students reach their full potential, and whereas, school counselors are actively committed to helping students explore their abilities, strengths, interests, and talents, as these traits relate to career awareness and development, and as whereas, school counselors help parents focus on ways to further the educational, personal, and social growth of their children, and whereas, school counselors work with educators to help students explore their potential and set realistic goals for themselves, and whereas, school counselors seek to identify and utilize community resources that can enhance and complement comprehensive school counseling programs and help students become productive members of society, and whereas, comprehensive developmental school counseling programs are considered an integral part of the educational process that enables all students to achieve success in school. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Stafford County School Board that it hereby designates February 5th through the 9th, 2018, as National School Counseling Week.
Thank you, Dr. Chase. And that brings us to Dr. Benson, who has a resolution.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's my pleasure to recognize 2018 School Board Appreciation Month, whereas the education of Virginia school-aged children is the foundation upon which economic, social, and intellectual strength of our Commonwealth is built, and whereas local school boards devote themselves to providing a high-quality education for all students in the Commonwealth, and whereas the leadership of our school boards affects the development and future of our children and ensures that students are prepared to compete in local, state, national, and global economies, and whereas locally-elected and appointed school board members play an important role in representative democracy, as the decisions of local school boards directly influence instruction in Virginia's public schools, and whereas, school board members work with parents, businesses, educational professionals, and other community members to create and sustain an educational vision for our students, and whereas, the Commonwealth of Virginia is proud of our educational system and appreciates the efforts of local school board members that local school board members make, the Virginia public school system a great place in which to educate our youth, and whereas, we can all take this opportunity to thank Virginia School Board members for their leadership and support of a public school system from which the entire Commonwealth benefits. Be it finally resolved, Stafford County recognizes February 2018 as School Board Appreciation Month and encourages local divisions and community leaders to appropriately recognize our state's dedicated school board members, and on behalf of Stafford County Public Schools, thank you to each and one of you, each and every one of you for your service.
Thank you, Dr. Benson.
I should clap myself.
No. No comment. That brings us to citizen comments, and I have a little blurb to read. Speakers shall identify themselves by name, address, and organizational affiliation if the spokesperson represents an organization. Speakers shall also announce the purpose, topic of their comments. Three minutes shall be allotted to speakers. The chairman reserves the right to restrict the total citizen comment received at any particular meeting to a predetermined maximum number of minutes with the approval of the board. Citizen comment which is profane, abusive, or which threatens imminent physical harm shall be ruled out of order by the chairman. Although the board provides the opportunity for citizen comment, individuals desiring to register complaints against division employees or division programs, services, or activities may also utilize the procedures outlined in Stafford County Public School Policy 1113, Public Complaints. We have no one that signed up for the public comment, but if you'd like to comment, please come down. We do have a signing sheet. I think there's a sign right there, so when you finish your comments, if you could please sign in and give us your name and address when you come in, although we all know Mrs. Brown.
Hi, Dana Brown, 41, St. William's Way. I try not to come here every meeting. Just something popped up on the agenda tonight I wanted to bring up. I want to talk about Agenda Item 902 for Action. It was reviewing some of the HR policies, just a housekeeping issue, and the one I was looking at was policy, I think it's 4201, and the part I was interested in was the criminal background checks. I noticed that we only seem to do background checks on employees when they first come on board, kind of a one-and-done, and that's it. Employees, I believe, are supposed to self-report criminal infractions. Given all the recent stories in the news where criminal offenses by school employees has fallen through the cracks and went unreported, I was wondering why we just don't follow the policies of like the federal government. They run everybody's prints through the system every five years, just kind of a...so we're not relying totally on self-reporting. It's just kind of a refresh, you know? You don't have to come down and get new fingerprints. We just take the existing ones, and every five years, just, you know, just check and make sure, kind of a common sense measure. I'm sure Mr. McCosker and all the other federal employees up here have had that done. That's part of their BI, but just I've seen all these stories up in Northern Virginia, and you know, about all these aides and these teachers that are in the classrooms, and they have criminal backgrounds, and they just didn't show up. I don't know if it was because they didn't use a good check system, or because it happened after they initially came on board. I don't know what happened, but I just wondered if something you might want to consider doing is just, you know, every five years, just, you know, recheck everybody. That was all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Brown. Would you mind signing in?
No.
That's all right. We do know you, and I know you're in my Rock Hill district.
Should be a senior.
Is there anyone else that would like to address the board? No? Seeing none, we'll close the public comment period and come to board member committee reports. Are there any student discipline committee reports, Mr. McCosker?
Yes. Mr. Vic.
Okay.
6.01, yes. Thank you, Madam Chair. On December 14th, 2017, a committee of the school board met to consider two student disciplinary matters. The committee suspended Student A for 10 days out of school, expelled Student B, and did not authorize Student B to attend the Regional Alternative Education Program, and suspended Student C for the remainder of the 2017-18 school year, but authorized Student C to attend the Regional Alternative Education Program.
That's it?
That's all I have.
All right. That brings us to board member committee reports. Are there any committee reports?
I have one.
Oh.
I can...
Okay. Ms. Young, you can start.
Okay, well, yesterday, we had our TAC, which is the Technology Advisory...
It's two years. Sorry.
Yesterday, we had our TAC, the TAC Committee, Technology Advisory Committee meeting. It was held at Stafford Elementary School, where a teacher demonstrated her classroom technology and the successes and plans to move to mobility. Nicole Stewart is actually the lead and is running the TAC. I see some members of the committee here, and so her goal, the way how it was reported, is to see where we could go in support of instruction, curriculum, and student success, and her desire and interest, and for the whole team, I guess that will be a goal and objective of all, to look at supporting the economically disadvantaged students.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Ms. Hazard, did you have a report?
I do. I actually have two, so I'll start with our Head Start Policy Council. Actually, our meeting is tomorrow, because our one in January was canceled, but I just wanted to update everyone that Head Start is...remains on a waiting list. There are still bus rides for our students, but the information about how our students last year did as they progressed from Head Start into kindergarten was they were operating at the 90% level in Head Start. It's amazing. It will be part of our packet, but Ms. Massey shared that with us, which I thought was sort, you know, just what's going on down there. As Ms. Healy mentioned last week, I'm excited about our upcoming event with the board supervisors to serve our Monday meal to our Head Start families. I've heard, heard, that we might be being an audience for a short musical presentation from some of our students that evening, so it's probably going to be a big night. I do believe that ice cream, as Ms. Healy said, which should be on there, so please again, mark your calendars for Monday, the 12th. Secondly, on the Legislative Committee update, we have our legislative priorities, which we have shared with our delegates, and as Ms. Healy, I know, got a call from Delegate Thomas, that he did put in the legislation related to 100% cost to compete for Stafford, as requested in our legislative priorities, and are always a nurse in every school that is supported with funding from the state, which would be ideal, because I would never want to be in a school without one of our wonderful nurses. And also, just in the interest of sharing our resources for legislative initiatives with Stafford County, they have reached out to us about having maybe weekly meeting throughout the session to keep each other updated on legislative sessions. I was planning at least to attend some of those, if possible, and I will just send a report to our clerk that she can, you know, distribute, if that's okay with the board.
Thank you, Ms. Hazard. Ms. Decatur?
The Special Education Advisory Committee met last evening for our first meeting of the new year, and I also wanted to, because I don't think I've done this yet, I wanted to take a minute to say welcome. It's been, you know, quite a while already, but welcome to Wendy Martin Johnson. You are already doing a phenomenal job. I know you had very big shoes to fill, and the committee is doing just lovely, so...anyways, we met last evening. We received updates from the Parent Resource Center regarding recently-held and upcoming parent workshops. Dates are to be determined, but there are some workshops coming up on guardianship as well as financial planning. SEPTA also gave us some updates. They have a workshop coming up on February 17th regarding family behavior management. That's going to be held at Stafford Hospital from 9:00 to 11:00. Again, that's February 17th. We were also notified that there will be some sensory-friendly performances from our fine and performing arts this year. Again, those showtimes are to be determined, but I was too excited to not mention it, at least. And then we also had a very informative presentation on changes to certain Medicaid waivers, and I just want to encourage families, if you haven't already, to please do visit the Parent Resource Center for, you know, information, upcoming events, and resources, because it's a very, very informative place to be. The next meeting will be held on February 26th.
Thank you, Ms. Decatur. Dr. Chase?
Last Thursday, I attended the CGS Governing Board meeting, and this was their annual organizational meeting. Mr. John Copeland of Carolyn County was elected Chair of the Governing Board. Somehow, I got my arm twisted to agree to be serve as Vice Chair. Dr. Robert Benson, the Superintendent of Carolyn County Schools, I'm sorry, of King George County Schools, agreed to serve as the Executive Superintendent. Several CGS students participated in a live broadcast town hall presentation at the Annual Conference of the National Council of Teachers of English, and English teachers from around the country were very impressed with our students. And then there was some discussion about how the Commonwealth Governor's School can provide dual enrollment biology to students. This may be, may also be relevant for Stafford County Public Schools as well, and I was happy to hear that Mr. Nichols was involved in these discussions, and that's it.
Thank you. Ms. Egan?
CIP Advisory. Mr. Haran and I have had some brief conversations about getting together and talking about what the new mission of our group is going to be, so stay tuned for that.
Thank you. That brings us to board member comments that we deferred from the last meeting. Would you like to start us, Ms. Egan?
I don't really have much. I just want to notice all of our principals and our assistant principals who are out there tweeting. I have...I'm on Twitter a lot more than I thought I would be, because they're, they're all out there tweeting on all of their events, the sporting events, the academic competitions, and just, you know, everything that's going on in their school, and I've been able to keep up with a lot of the different schools and their, and their activities through Twitter, so thanks, and I'm going to keep... So, thanks, and I'm going to keep watching your tweets. While we're on social media, just want to let you guys know that there's been some hubbub with all of the exams are coming up soon and parents are concerned about their kids being stressed out and whatnot about the exams and all the time that we've missed so far, and the issue of the calendar has come up. And parents are getting a little bit concerned that we've not addressed it yet this year. So, if we could at some point in the next week or two, maybe have that conversation, whether it's at our retreat or we have staff give us an idea of, of Dr. Benson, how we're going to handle this. I've got to start getting some answers together for our parents.
We can ask Dr. Benson to address that in his comments, if that's all right. Okay. Dr. Chase?
Well, first, I just wanted to say how honored I am at the opportunity to serve on this board, and I wanted to thank everyone on the board and on the staff for the very warm welcome, and also to thank you all for all of your patience with my many, many questions. I'm trying to learn as much as I can, as quickly as I can. And I want to thank Mr. Scott Hirons for how gracious and helpful he was during my transition onto the board. He was really quite lovely. I've made a number of school visits with Dr. Benson since the election. I think I've been to Conway, Falmouth, Drew, Kate Waller Barrett, Shirley Heim, Brookpoint, and Colonial Forge. Hope he's not getting too sick of me. And I just want to say how incredibly impressed I am with our amazing teachers. It's very clear that they have worked very hard to develop their craft, and it is really wonderful to see so many of our students engaged in learning. Last Thursday night, I attended the Maker Fair at Drew Middle School. It was a fantastic event. I saw lots of students engaged in making things, and there were also quite a number of terrific science fair projects. Finally, yesterday, Ms. Young and I had the opportunity to tour Gary Melcher's complex and learn more about Stafford's Early Childhood Education Program, Head Start, and Virginia Preschool Initiative. And we were very impressed with the coordination that's going on between Head Start and Stafford County Public Schools. And that's all I've got. Thanks.
Thank you, Dr. Chase. Mr. McCosker?
Sure. Thank you. Just thanks for everyone's hard work, coming back from the nice, long break we had. And we got busy next couple of months with the budget. This time of year is really just packed, the schedule, and for good reason, it's budget time. So, tomorrow evening at 6:00 PM, behind us here, we'll have the finance and budget with myself, Ms. Hazard, and Ms. Young will be there, and everyone else is welcome to come. I'll be back here, and then, on the 10th of February at the hospital, we'll have our offsite where we'll talk budget and CIP, and whatever else the board adds onto the plate for that. And that's about it.
Ms. Young?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, last meeting, we didn't have an opportunity to thank everyone, so thank you very much for the warm welcome also, and for the citizens for electing me to serve. It will be my pleasure. I, too, am drinking from a fire hose, but will work as hard as possible. So, me, too, with questions, hopefully, it's not too hard. I believe that all students have equal value and should have the opportunity to succeed. Teachers should be respected for taking great care for our students in many situations. I'm also moved yesterday's hard work for Melcher's Complex. Earlier this year, I set up meetings with a lot of principals. Even though I've known them as a parent, I wanted to know them as a school board member, and I toured elementary schools, middle schools, and high schools. Yesterday, I visited HH Pool again with Mr. Bingham, and it brings you back to whom you are and what you're doing it for when you see little people. So, today, Sarah and I revisited the V SBA, the Virginia School Board Association. It had an orientation again, and we learned a lot. And basically, it surrounded discussions about roles and responsibilities, ethics and communications, and, yeah, it was eye-opening, so. Lastly, if the board doesn't have an objection, can we look into moving comments up in the, in the agenda for citizens' comments? Currently, we have a work agenda. We have a business agenda. I believe it's policy 1108. I'm not sure if we have, governors could take a look at that to see if we could move it up, but I just believe that the public comes here to make comments and maybe they want to leave early. If they want to stay, then that's fine, but some of them had little ones that they want to go home and return to. So, I think giving them some time back is very important. So, I think in one of the, one of them is like number four, and then the other one is number nine. So, we could look at the policy and see if we're following the policy, and if not, we could just change that, you know? So, I thought maybe the governance committee could take a look at that.
Thank you.
And that's all I have.
Bring that to our governance committee. I'm not sure they, is there a meeting scheduled, or we can just, at the next, you can schedule one?
We've, we've got a few things that we're going to be talking about, so we can add that.
Okay. You know, this month is booked with budget.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But certainly something. Right. Okay. Thank you for the suggestion. All right. Ms. Decatur?
Not too many updates from me today, just since we didn't get a chance, welcome you guys. Thanks for hopping on board with us. Eager to run with you, and especially eager to get into this budget, budget season. Last year, I was elected in November and thrown right into redistricting, budget, all sorts of things. I was drinking from the fire hose as well. So, this year, I've, I've got a year of experience. I've learned a lot. I've heard from a lot of you, and, and I'm really eager to get working on some things that I think I felt last year that I really missed out on, on achieving in that budget. So, anyways, yeah, really eager to get going.
Thank you. Ms. Hazard?
Sure. Well, since we did curtail our comments, again, welcome to our new board members. I know that they've jumped in with both feet and everything else, so welcome aboard. I'm excited for your energy. It's exciting, so. And I wanted to also just say Happy New Year to our students and families, but especially to our seniors. Our 2018 is finally here, my, our class of 2018. As I would say to one in my own household, no senioritis, and I know several of us have that potentially that we're working with. I never thought, well, 2018's now finally here, so. I would also like to announce that I'll be holding a Hartwood Community Meeting focused on the school budget growth and priorities. The meeting will be held next Thursday, February 1st, at Gale Middle School, which is at 100 Panther Way. The doors will open about 6:30, and the meeting will be set to begin about 6:45. For those of you who know me in technology, I can't believe I'm saying this, but it's my hope to have some interactive audience participation, so please arrive early so that that can be set up, if you would like to do that. So, I hope to see our Hartwood Community next Thursday. I do have an inclement weather date Thursday, February 8th, because every time I do that, then we won't need it, but if I did not announce it, we would probably have a snowstorm next Thursday. And I had one other thing. I wanted to ask, I did share this with Ms. Healy, ask if the board would support our potential nomination of our Teaching and Learning Summit for the V SBA Excellence in Workforce Readiness Award. I believe, Ms. Healy, you and I talked about that, and we thought we would just confirm with the board that we might, because we would have, we would have to in the future pass a rev, we'd have to take a vote on that, so I thought before we kind of put in the effort to make sure, just making sure we were all good, that we had talked. And then, just the final one is, I, too, have received many comments about the exam and midterm schedule. I do believe that these exams are important educational component of our classes, and I'd like to note that this debate occurs any year with weather impacts in January and December. I believe this debate could be eliminated if the school calendar were to conclude the semester prior to winter break. I know the board went back and forth in the fall about whether we wanted to get the calendar process going. We, in August, said we would deal with that in, in the fall, so we wouldn't deal with it as part of the budget. I do believe this is something I do not want to wait till May again and then say we run out of time. I believe this is an important, important issue on the calendar, the process of doing that and allowing our community the time to really weigh in. So, the sooner, the better. I would agree, based on some of the comments I'm getting as well. So, anyway, but welcome aboard and looking forward to the year.
Thank you, Ms. Hazard. Is there any objections for Ms. Hazard exploring the nomination for us as a board of the program? Does it, no? If you could look into that some more and bring it back?
I'll try and bring it in February because we have to have it in by March.
Okay. We can put that on the, on the agenda. Thank you. Well, I just have, you know, one announcement. Mr. McCosker and I will be meeting with the Chair and Vice Chair of the Board of Supervisors tomorrow. We were actually scheduled for last week, but the weather stopped us from meeting. But I don't think we'll have any problems tomorrow. It's going to be continuing in the 50s. So, we're, we're looking forward to that and looking forward to a good year with the, with the supervisors. I think that they're, you know, it's, it's an exciting time. There's, there's new faces on both boards, and they're going to be certainly getting a newer face in the not-too-far future for the George Washington District. So, this is a good time to reach out to your counterparts. I know most of you have already, well, all of you, I'm sure, have already done that this year, but I think we're fortunate to have good relationships individually with our counterparts, and then, you know, that just makes it, is easier to, to work together as, as the boards. And I also want to welcome our new members. Appreciate all the work you've already done because I think your work started the day after the election. And I know how much time you've put into it, and you have to trust me on this, but it does get a little better once we get through the budget. At least, it's not like every night, it's maybe every other night, but, you know, so there is, there is a life beyond, you know, the, the budget. But this, this is the most intense time of the year for us, and, and it's also the most important because what we do now impacts the entire school system and, and, you know, what our goals are and what we want to achieve for the coming year. All right. That brings us to Dr. Benson, Superintendent's comments.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Last week, I had the pleasure of notifying the three finalists for our Teacher of the Year for this current year. We, we had a little entourage that traveled out to the schools, not, not quite publisher's clearinghouse kind of. I would love to be able to bring a check. We did bring cupcakes. But we did try to keep it, you know, confidential and, and make it a surprise for the folks that are going to be our finalists, so we had, it was fun being out in the schools and, and letting folks know that they're one of our three finalists. So, without further ado, our three finalists for Teacher of the Year for this year, first is Nick Kennedy, who is a sixth-grade math teacher at Stafford Middle School. And then, we have Georgia Covina, who's seventh-grade science teacher at Gale Middle School. And then, we have Dan Riegerd, who is fifth-grade teacher at Kate Waller Barrett Elementary School. And they are our three finalists for this, for this current year, and of course, we'll have the big reveal at our banquet at the end, at the end of the year. So, and then, with regard to calendar, I believe the board wanted to wait until we had our new board members seated after the organizational meeting to see if there was any additional direction that the board might want to provide to me in developing a recommendation regarding calendar development for, and this would not be for FY '19, this would be for FY '20.
Do, can we put, take a few minutes to add that on with our, when we're going to meet on February 10th? I think, you know, we're going to not, we're going to try not to go all day, but, you know, we could, you know, allot a portion of time. We can have that discussion because this is a significant issue.
Yeah, it is.
And it's usually four to three vote as pre-Labor Day or post-Labor Day, so every time we have a change in the guard, you know, there's a potential change in that calendar. And probably now that we have the middle of winter with all the inclement weather days, there may be a, a different view of it, so we'll, we'll put that on for just, you know, maybe no more than 30 minutes.
I think, Madam Chair, we just maybe email Dr. Benson our concerns with the calendar and so that he can build a outline for our discussion on the 10th, so it's productive, you know, just your pros and your cons on the calendar.
Well, is, is the main, the main issue is the pre or post-Labor Day, is it not?
I would say it's the process.
Oh, the process. All right.
Because I think that's what we heard a lot about was how do we involve our community more in that discussion going in so that, and I thought we were looking at potentially changing that calendar committee and the process of how do we, if we're going to be really looking at some, making a major change, one way or the other, yes or no, how do we get more community input? I would really, most of you know, think we need to do a large one or two sessions to educate the public on this, but that's my own thoughts because I think the more we have, and when we did our, you know, tried a new, little bit of a new approach with redistricting, we had a lot of people there that at least said, my voice was at least heard. So, I mean, that's my idea on, at least, that the process maybe needs to be more engaging to our public, but.
So, do, well, maybe we'll need more than 30 minutes. What, what we're going to need to talk about, I think we need to give a little history to our, our newest members, you know, how we've gotten to where we are today, which is basically at a standstill. So, Dr. Benson, could you put together a little background information?
Absolutely.
And then, issues that you believe the board needs to address before we can move forward with, you know, where we're going to go in formulating the FY '20? Well, it sounds like a long time from now, but it's really not.
It's not. And that's where, that's kind of where I was going with is give Dr. Benson some input about where, what you're hearing from your constituents. Hey, you know, we're starting 20 days early, but we're ending four days later, you know? All those things, the whether truth or dare, you know?
No.
He'll put it together, yeah.
So, Dr. Benson will give us, give you background information, and then, the board's going to have to decide where, where we're going to go forward. I don't expect us to come to a conclusion. It's really the purpose of putting it on the agenda for the 10th is to have a discussion, but we are going to have to, to, to move this forward within the next, you know, certainly, I would think by the end of March to, if not before that. You could let us know, Dr. Benson, on when, you know, your proposed timeline on when you need, you know, the board to move as well. This is a controversial subject.
Are we making a decision without involving?
I think the process has to be part of that discussion, I think.
Yeah, okay.
So, I will, I'll put together some background information. I actually already started working on that, and I've, I've collected some information about how our comparison divisions do calendar development as well, and, and then I'll look to see what additional direction I might receive from the board.
And, Dr. Benson, could you just briefly address the exam issue that Ms. Egan asked about, how we're going to address the midterms?
Absolutely. So, we, we did have a conversation with our high school and middle school principals and determined that it really is in our best interest to move forward with a benchmark assessment, this exam, in order to gauge student progress across the division. You know, one of the complicating factors with Spotsylvania Public Schools and canceling their exams, but they started school earlier than we did, and the days that they missed out of school were closer to their exam schedule. It's my understanding that, that principals have developed a strategy to minimize any negative impact that exams might have on our young people across the division, and are in the process of, or in the process of communicating that.
Thank you. Any more comments? No? All right. That brings us to the consent agenda.
Motion to approve consent.
Motion by Mrs. Hazard.
Second.
Second by Ms. Egan. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Brings us to action items. 9.01. Approve the Superintendent's proposed amendments to policies assigned to the Office of the Superintendent as delineated in the agenda. Do we have a motion?
Madam Chair, motion to approve 9.01.
Motion by Ms. Egan. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Hazard. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. That brings us to 9.02. Approve the Superintendent's proposed revisions to policies and regulations as reviewed by the Department of Human Resources. Do we have a motion?
Madam Chair, motion to approve 9.02.
Motion by Ms. Egan.
Second.
Second by Ms. Young. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion carries unanimously. 9.03. Approve new school capacity standards. Do we have a motion?
Madam Chair, motion to approve 9.03.
Mrs. Egan is on a roll. Thank you. Motion by Mrs. Egan.
Second.
Second by Ms. Hazard. Any discussion?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
So, I just wanted to make sure that, that we are aware between the program capacity versus design capacity. So, we're making sure that that's, because it just says new school capacities.
Oh, okay. Yes. And the new school capacity standards would be the, the program capacity, correct, Dr. Benson?
That's correct.
That's correct.
Under the elementary schools.
For elementary.
And can I ask one question? And so, this is still somewhat fluid. If things change, the programs within a school change, then the capacity would change.
That's correct, Dr. Chase. So, we would look annually at how those spaces are configured, and those adjustments would be made, and then, if, if something, you know, allows us to provide some relief for certain programs and where they are housed, that would have a significant impact on, on what those capacities would look like the next time we examine them.
And so, we're doing this on a yearly? We will be doing it on a yearly basis?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
We look at our program capacity and we do look at our enrollment projections on an annual basis. So as program needs change within the division and we look at how to best accommodate and support our young people, there are changes in where those programs are housed and so that will have an impact. But at the same time, we also update our enrollment projections and that can have an impact on that capacity as well.
And I suggest we also share this with the county because there's always discussion about capacity in the schools and what we're basically saying here is that although our schools were designed for a certain number of students because of the types of programs that we offer, and part of that is by choice and part of it is by, you know, federal and state mandate, that our capacity to educate the students is not the same as the capacity it was designed for. If you look at these numbers, you'll see that the program capacity in most cases is less students. But if we could share that, I think that would be helpful and when your meetings with Mr. Foley, perhaps you could give him some background on that as well. Thank you.
Ms. Healy? I still have a question. Ms. Hazard? I guess this is one area that I feel very strongly about. This is one of the most important items, I actually think that the school board has addressed. This approach doesn't just impact our facility planning, but it impacts our receipt of funds as set forth in proffers. The new proffer legislation requires our analysis to be based on seats available at the time of the filing, which I won't even tell you why, I think that's a mess. But however, the development may not be built for three to five years, showing the use of facility will change, but unless us and the school board show accurately what space is available based on the use of the building, we're not helping our Board of Supervisor colleagues when they are negotiating proffers because, and trying to get the adequate funds. I have reviewed a proffer statement right now that's pending before the Planning Commission and it talks about dividing up attendance areas, paying less for kids going to one school versus another. I, well, I won't, you can all tell how I feel about that, I don't like to treat people differently and the type of proffer writing is becoming something to avoid paying proffers. Us coming forward and saying, "These are how our schools are used, these are really what our available seats are, this particular proffer statement is using our numbers from 2016." We cannot do that. I think this is really important and especially in our growth, growth time. I would suggest, or Ms. Healy, perhaps you and Mr. McCosker could raise with your colleagues, I know several years ago, and I'm sorry, Mr. Hiran, if I'm putting you on the spot, a year or two ago, we went over, I went with Mr. Hiran to the Planning Commission and he presented these just so our planning commissioners could also see what the change was. I don't, I know at the time, Mr. Appicello had asked for it, I know there's new chairs and vice chairs over there, but I thought they had asked and thought that that was helpful, so just throwing that out as a possibility, which we did, probably about two years ago? Yeah, okay. So just.
Thank you. Well, the first step, we'll have Dr. Benson share it with Mr. Foley and I'm sure he'll pass it along, but you could make the point that we want to make sure it gets down to the planning folks at the county. Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion to approve?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. That brings us to 9.04. Adopt a resolution to request appropriation by the Stafford County Board of Supervisors of the FY 17 carryforward funds totaling $1,640,000 into the FY 18 school operating fund budget to be used for the upgrade and replacements of the SCPS Transportation Department radio system and radios. We have a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Ms. Hazard.
Second.
Second by Ms. Decatur. Any discussion? All in favor of the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. 9.05. Adopt a resolution to request appropriation by the Stafford County Board of Supervisors of the FY 17 carryforward funds totaling $473,597 and the school's capital projects reserve totaling $226,403 into the FY 18 school capital projects fund budget to be used for the replacement of the Hartwood Elementary School wastewater treatment facility. Do we have a motion? Motion to approve. Motion by Ms. Hazard. Second by Ms. Decatur. Any discussion?
Yeah, I do have something, so we, going back to when this came on, it's not that we don't think in the next couple of years that Hartwood would need this $700,000 treatment facility, but I kind of looked at this as, for two things, the new board members really haven't been able to had a chance to rack and stack their, their schools and identify their schools in the CIP, in the infrastructure improvements. They haven't had a chance to kind of sit down with us and rack them and bring their issues forth. And if this, if this was the failure of, of course, we'd put the $700,000 in and we'd change it. But the next couple of years, you know, Ferry Farm and Hartwood are coming up for a renovation, rebuild, depending on what the CIP outlook is at the Board of Supervisors across the street, and I hear there are changes coming with whether they're going to do a courthouse or, you know, so I'm just saying, is this, is this the best time just to lay down $700,000 on, this thing may, may break in the next couple of years. And so that's, that's my concern with this item.
I have a quick question.
Yes, Ms. Egan.
This is carryover funds, right? So these are funds that we wouldn't normally budget for another year?
The $473,000 is savings from FY 17 and then the item is asking for an additional $226,000 out of capital projects reserve.
Okay, and considering now that we don't really, well, we have to use the money or it goes, goes back to the Board of Supervisors and they'll, I don't know, maybe go to a road or something, but wouldn't it make sense to take care of immediate needs? We're not really racking and stacking anymore because we don't know what kind of funds we're going to get back. We've already kind of done that and we've already decided that this was one of the things that we had racked and stacked before. There'll be opportunity for next year's carryover to do the rack and stack. And the fact that we've got a whole lot of growth going on down at Hartwood and other areas, and those are the areas that we really need to start concentrating on, we don't have the funds right now to build any other new school at the moment, so I think we need, what we need to do is take care of, we've put off these projects, just like you said, Dwayne, I get it, and Ferry Farm will have its, its time, but we're talking about, you know, water needs at an elementary school. My opinion, that's where the money needs to go.
Ms. Healy, if I could ask Mr. Hiran to come up and explain how this became?
Okay, I'd like to give the board an opportunity to comment and then we can do that. Ms. Decatur.
Yeah, and I also, so I guess if we're going to ask Mr. Hiran, this might be a question for him also, I don't necessarily need an answer to the question, but I would just ask the board to think about, there's a, there's a lot of what ifs in this scenario and I get that's what you're bringing up, but would we rather wait for an emergency and, you know? So, and it's a rhetorical question because I would prefer to not wait for an emergency and take care of these obligations.
Dr. Chase?
Yeah, I just had a clarification question because Ms. Egan was indicating that, that if we didn't spend this money on this, it would go away. Am I, am I correct in that or is it the case that, that if we don't spend the money right this today, we might be able to think about next month?
So, Dr. Chase, we would, if the board were to decide not to move forward with this particular item, we would ask the board to identify some other capital needs that could be addressed such that we could make a similar request of supervisors to try and use those funds. As we've talked, both in terms of budget and challenges with the CIP, we have some pretty significant infrastructure projects that we need to address and we're trying to get to the point of spending approximately, you know, $10 million a year in that upgrade, okay? Half bonded, half in cash. And so we try to take care of as many of these along the way as we can with savings and that's what we're asking the board to consider this evening, if not this project, some other projects on the list.
Any other comments?
If we consider other projects, can we still consider this project at that time?
Of course.
Yeah.
It's the board's decision on what to ask the supervisors to appropriate this money for. Did you have anything else? Or?
I guess, I was asking Ms. Chase if she was finished.
Ms. Young, we'll come back for.
So, I, I did receive the list from Mr. Hiran and I am still reviewing it, so I don't have enough information right now that this is a priority or an emergency. I was thinking that we could look at it in the context of the CIP and the priority list. Is the carryover money, actually, is that sufficient to cover all of this or are you looking for more money?
The carryforward money, there's not sufficient funds to fund it entirely, our carryforward. We would need to ask the supervisors for an additional $226,000 out of our capital reserves.
So, they would be asking us the same question, is this an emergency or urgency? So I just think that we need to think this through and look at the whole list and realize that if this is really an emergency, is it, is it broken, that we have to fix it right now? That's all I'm saying. There is that priority list that I'm still reviewing while I'm doing the budget. Like I said, there's a lot of stuff going on, so give me some time.
I'm going to make a comment, well, Ms. Healy.
Well, we'll start around two.
I would like Mr. Hiran to come up and explain, I mean, he sent me a pretty full reason why this was voted number one of our group. I am not going to sit up here and tell you that a chiller is more expensive or is more important than this. This is what staff came up with. I am going to defer to them. Why it became a priority was explained to me by Mr. Hiran after they dealt with the water issues first at Hartwood, which we have to deal with, and then once they drained this wastewater, it became more of a priority because it was failing. But I would rather have Mr. Hiran give that information than to me to read his, his email. I'm just, I guess my comment is, is I know we are the board members, but I do think we have to have some deference to our staff because otherwise the list that you all have moved to, that we moved to the February meeting, that project is not on this list and it was number one on their list, so this would have to be revised and we still have a $700,000 project that we need to. So I have to say from, if this has become critical, it sounds like, under Mr. Hiran's, but I would, I would have to defer to him and to staff for their analysis, not my particular analysis.
Mr. Hiran, if you want to address this briefly, if you could also address the item in the, that was in the background where it said that this is expected to fail within the next several years. That was the question I had when this came forward and my question is, you know, the urgency. If it's within the next several years, is there anything else?
Yes, ma'am, certainly.
But just briefly.
Absolutely. So we conducted, we commissioned a study in 2013 to look at the wastewater as well as the water systems at Hartwood, with the idea to, what would we need to do to get us through 10 years, thinking that we had a CIP, a large CIP project identified and approved by the school board and the county to renovate Hartwood in about eight or nine, 10 years. So we were looking for what was going to get us to the 10-year point. So we commissioned this study, they identified significant issues in the water as well as the wastewater. The water we felt was more important, we identified that and we funded that as part of, the school board funded that as part of the FY 15 annual operating budget. We designed the repair project and we constructed the improvements to the water system as part of that. Then we identified last year in FY 17 funds to design the wastewater treatment repair or upgrade. We identified a certain amount of that. There were some additional funds to get, to continue the design that was part of the end of year FY 17, which the school board approved, for us to continue further with the, with the design effort, with the anticipation of funding the project in FY 18. A committee that, made up of staff members ranging from the associate, superintendent of instruction, to technology, to operations, elementary and secondary, we met to rack and stack the projects, the FY 18 projects, of which the wastewater treatment facility was identified as the number one need out of roughly seven to eight million dollars worth of projects. So that hasn't changed in staff's opinion, certainly not my opinion. This is a project that needs to be done sooner than later. The 2013 report identified the need to replace or upgrade the wastewater treatment plant with the caveat that they needed to drain the tank, the tanks, to see the condition of the tanks empty. We did that after the report was commissioned, we found that there was significant corrosion and issues with the wastewater treatment plant that caused us to even agree more that this needed to occur sooner than later. The level of risk increases the longer we wait to not do the project. It's hard to quantify what that risk is, but the risk is there that if the system were to become inoperable, could we fix it within a week, a month, six months, depending on what would fail is, you know, that's a variable, I just couldn't tell you at this point in time. I can tell you that if the plant is inoperable and we can't get it fixed, therefore we'll incur roughly between $5,000 and $6,000 a week in pump and haul charges. We are estimating that we'll have to pump the septic tanks twice a week and knowing that the project, there's some long lead items associated with this project, anywhere from 12 to 16 weeks for some of the prefabricated pieces of the wastewater treatment. So if we advertise this project, which roughly takes three to four weeks, we select a contractor, they order it, we're looking at four to five months timeframe, even with a streamlined procurement, maybe you can shave off a month of that, but you're looking at roughly $100,000 to $120,000 in pump and haul fees that would incur if it was during the school year. Obviously, if it's during the summer, that would decrease because we wouldn't have to pump the septic tanks out at the frequency we do if school's in session. So that's in addition to potential DEQ violations. If in fact, we are discharging, it breaks and we discharge and we violate our permit. So that's, there could be some violations, but probably not significant, but violations nonetheless. So, all of that is in, on top of the cost of doing the actual project, so. How do you quantify that risk? We do that with anything, an HVAC system, a roof, wastewater treatment plant, so.
Could you address the, my question about the next several years, I mean, that's what was given to us as background and, you know, I'm going to make a decision, you know, certainly considering what you said, but also what's, what's put out in this report.
Yes, ma'am.
And it says that it's expected to fail within the next several years. It didn't say next month or this year, but the next several years tells me that it's not quite the, the urgency as it's, it's gone now. We're lucky to have it working.
And that probably my fault, I chose maybe improper words, that was verbiage from the 2013 report. It identified the need. Again, a caveat, the report is when we drain the tanks and we look at the condition of the tanks when they were drained, after the report, it calls staff, not the consultant, but staff, to agree that we needed to do this sooner than later. And that was a 2013 report, it's 2018 now, that's roughly four and a half years since the report was commissioned. I can tell you, the consultants recommended that we make these upgrades within that five year period, so we exceeded that five year period. So I probably used poor choice of words in the agenda item.
Can we see that report that?
Sorry, ma'am.
The report that you were referring to?
Yes, ma'am.
Is it available?
Absolutely.
Yes.
I don't want to interrupt.
I think he's about done.
I am done.
We told him briefly.
Yes, ma'am, I am done.
Unless you have anything.
No, ma'am.
Critical.
That's all.
Thank you. But don't go away, though, we may have questions.
I don't have any more questions. May I just, I just want to say something candidly and try to keep my blood pressure low because it like spikes randomly right now, but I think it's important to note that we're not an every man for himself board. You know, we are one of seven members that serve an entire county, so the reason that I feel that it's important for me to say this right now is because in my year on the board, several times, this list has come before us and we approve, you know, as funding becomes available, we approve down to what we can afford. At one point, you know, there was, it was between a school in my district and another district and we had to choose between 10 district and we had to choose between tennis courts and a track. But this is not a rat race to see who can win getting their thing approved. This is us working together to make sure that we're approving things based on the needs of our county. And so, I just think that it's important that we remember that funds are going to become available and we're going to approve everything that's on that list as the funds become available. We don't need to try to one-up each other and I understand that, you know, some things haven't been approved. And Mr. McCosker, I'm on your team with Ferry Farm because it's very important, but at the same time, Ferry Farm is an entire rebuild or renovation. It's not a, you know, a project that we're checking off of a list as funds become available. So, I just felt that it was really important for me to say that and make sure that we're all on the same page with regards to that.
Thank you. All right, round two?
Sure, I'll go round two. So, once again, this, the reason this was brought up and this was separated out was because of, number one, this was not on last year's list of approved sewage treatment plant, correct?
It was on the FY17 end-of-year for design.
Yeah, the design was on. So, the design for $51,000 was on, but this $650,000 treatment plant wasn't even on it?
Because it was not designed. And we knew that we couldn't execute the project.
And I understand that. So, that's one thing. And of course, I didn't agree with last year's list because here I have a 1957, this isn't us/them, but here I have a 1957 Ferry Farm Elementary School has got zero upgrades in 10 years because it has, it's been on the docket to get redone, renovated, whatever you have. And then, this pops up on the thing. You've got two brand-new board members and then six, seven, now it's $700,000 that we're spending up cash. This is cash right now. And so, that's why we brought this up, to let the two new board members say, hey, I know Ferry Farm stuff's not on there and now we're working to it, thankfully. We're working as a board to try to get some stuff on with Ferry Farm. But, hey, you two need to look at your stuff. We need to look at our stuff to say, hey, this is a brand-new $700,000 bill on the table. Is this the only thing that needs to get fixed? With the caveat that over the next few years, over the next few years, these walls can fall down. Over the next few years, these 10 air conditioning units can go out. Over the next few years, I mean, so we're just, speaking for self, I'm just looking at the actual agenda item and making a call. Is this the best way to spend our money? Now, with Mr. Haran's discussion, that's still within the next few years. You know, this, I wanted to bring this back, you know, if there's four votes to move this forward, then move it forward and we'll be done with it. But, you know, that's my issue. This isn't us/them. Because I've already, you know, this us is already lost because Ferry Farm has got zip in the last 10 years, right?
All right. We're talking about the Hartwood Treatment Sewer Treatment Plan. Dr. Chase, round two.
Mr. Haran, could you tell me what number two on the list is?
Repair elevator for Stafford Middle School.
And what is the cost of number two?
$187,000.
Okay. What would number three be?
Repair phone, media retrieval and PA system for Hampton Oaks in the tune of $195,000. Number four is repair roof at Widewater Elementary School is the shingle roof on the addition to replace it with standing seam. Number five is...
Okay, that's far enough. We're only, we really only have $500,000. $200 and some was coming out of the...
So, number three?
The fundings. Three was Hampton Oaks. Well, I don't think we're in any position to start trading these things right now. And I want to say, Ms. Decatur, I agree with you. And I think that the questions that we're raising here are not because there's a concern about a particular school where this funding is going. Is this the immediate need for these funds? We all know we have limited funds. They are carryover funds, as Egan pointed out, at least almost $500,000 of them are. They're last year's funds. We are limited in what we can ask the supervisors to reallocate these funds for, but there are a number of projects. And as I've stated more than once, and perhaps it was inartfully drafted, but when I read it and it said, "within the next several years," my immediate reaction was, is there anything that is a more immediate need that we need to do now that is going to fail sooner than that? And that's what, you know, I wanted to explore. If, you know, we're going to bring this to a vote and if, in fact, you know, if it passes, it's done. It goes to the supervisors. If it doesn't pass, I would suggest that we add it to the list and you can put it back at the top of the list because we are going to be discussing that list at the February 10th work session. So, it's not the last time you'll see it. We may never see it again because it'll get approved, but whatever happens, it's, this is not, I don't believe this is at all a school versus school or district versus district. This is a decision for, we have as the fiduciaries of the public funds to allocate those funds and make the determination, what is the immediate need. So, perhaps next time you send it up, you choose those words wisely.
Absolutely, yes, ma'am.
Because we're going to take you literally.
Yes, ma'am.
Or at least I am. Thank you. Any other comments around two? Well, okay, Ms. Hazard, I'll give you one more. It is your district, but then, you know, we'll...
No, my only comment would be, is, my only comment would be, is if we approve this in May, this project will not get done during the summer. The lead time that is, that Mr. Haran has put forth gets us to the summer to do it when we do not have students in that school. If we wait, when we find out how much money we may or may not have, that timeframe is about May...
It pushes us to the next summer.
It pushes us to the next year into that. Mr. Haran's comments about 2013 saying, "in the next several years" is from that '13 date and not from today's date. So, I would just say, if it's not approved now, even if we fund it in May or June, it will not be a project that will be coming forward or be able to be implemented at least for another year. And that would be my only comment, is I think that's why it was chosen. Two was to say, this is a project we'd really like to do when the students aren't in the building.
Dr. Chase?
So, what, when would we need to approve it by to actually get it done before the next school year started?
Certainly, we are poised to advertise the project in several weeks. 30 days to advertise, 30 days to bring to the board for contract approval. So, that puts us in the latter part of March before we can let the contractor start ordering some of those long lead items. So, we are in that time zone. We probably have a week or two to float, month maybe at the far end, but anything past that really puts us in a more precarious position to get and be successful during the summer in completing this and having it back online. Certainly, the project is designed so that they install the new wastewater treatment plant before they disconnect the old one.
So, do we, I'm sorry, have we already spoken to the board of supervisors to say that you're guaranteed?
No, ma'am. No, ma'am. That's what we're here, to request the board to approve it and to request the carryover money from the board of supervisors. So, it's not guaranteed.
Mr. Haran, do I understand correctly that you're saying if this decision were made this time next month, then it would still be enough time to have the project done over the summer if this were not to pass tonight?
Well, again, we have to go to the board of supervisors, obviously, for the, and I don't, can't speak to their timeframe.
I thought you just said we would have another month.
From an advertising perspective, we are poised...
The answer that you just gave, did you not just say we'd have another month?
I said, yes, ma'am. I do believe I said two to three weeks, month, I think, a month. But I think it would put us in a position that we would be jeopardizing the success of the project this summer. The sooner we can do it, obviously, the more successful that we as an organization will be at executing the project. So, I don't want to say that if you wait a month and then you pull the trigger, that we can't do it because we certainly need to do this. And so, we'll do everything in our power to execute it if the board decides to wait a month or two weeks or what have you. But the sooner we can get this, a decision on this, the better.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, any other questions, comments? Call for the question.
I'll favor the motion to approve the appropriation and use of the capital projects reserve funding as stated in 9.05. Say aye.
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 Ms. Decatur?
Aye.
Ms. Egan?
Aye.
Ms. Hazard?
Aye.
Ms. Healy?
No.
Mr. McCosker?
Nope.
Ms. Young?
No.
Madam Chair, motion passes 423.
So, it won't have to come back. That brings us to item 9.05.
No.
Where are we now?
10.01.
I'm the wrong one. You know what? I'm on the wrong, I thought we took them, I'm looking at the written one.
I know.
All right, so 10.01 is now approve option number three in support of SCPS meal debt practice. Yeah, we need to refresh.
Refresh, because they pulled out.
Yes.
The 10.01.
All right. Mr. Berkeley Dunbrack is here. Does anyone want a presentation by Mr. Dunbrack? This is on for information. We asked, we asked us to come to the board based on the report that we got in December of the rapidly increasing debt incurring from our policy, our pilot program policy that we implemented last summer for this school year.
I would just, well, I guess, aside from the options that are here, what is it that you would like from us? Do you want us to narrow it down or are we going to attack them individually next meeting?
I would hesitate to recommend that we stay pat with what we're doing now. I recently closed out December for the state and we are up to over $32,000. So, it's continuing to increase month by month and we're going to really start to get into a situation where, you know, we're arguing over a couple hundred thousand dollars. We could start to get $100,000 in meal debt possibly if we continue to increase at this rate.
What is your recommendation?
I would recommend that we try to give option three an opportunity. 20 days, really, we arrived at that number because we basically have three different ways that we hear from parents that they get paid either 15 and 30 of every month, every two weeks, or once a month. 20 school days, we give them a calendar, four weeks. At any point in time during that four weeks, everybody should get some type of income. If they're not and they're getting government assistance, then we'll find out about that and we would be happy to send them a free and reduced application because that's in everybody's best interest.
Thank you.
Yes. Would you say initiate debit collection after 20 days?
Yes, ma'am.
Can you explain what that process looks like?
Well, essentially, what we would do is we would go back to our old system of replacing the lunch and continue to try to contact the parents. We're going through three different steps right now. We send letters home, negative balance letters home to parents with students. That's always difficult, especially with our younger students. They tend to stay in the backpack. I have a five-year-old who will pull out her folder on Friday and say, hey, look at all this stuff I got on Monday. So, we go in and collect it now. We have involved the schools and the schools have been great. Parents getting calls from principals, counselors. I've called a lot of parents myself, but those things aren't really working. So, the meal is really the one thing that we can do. I hate to use the word motivate, but to get some action out of the parents. Really, it has to, it has to impact the student in some way and because we really don't want to get into anything academic, anything extracurricular, all we can really do is kind of manipulate what we're doing inside that lunchroom to really not affect them outside.
And in the last presentation, just, you had mentioned that it's not so much the high schoolers, right? It's more elementary, middle where the debt is?
The majority of it, reason being is, again, the communication between high schoolers a lot of times is, is a lot better with the parents. And some of them have part-time jobs. We don't, we don't see a lot of it. I would say of that $32,000, probably 17 to 18 is from the elementary level.
And I just have one more question. Sorry, guys. Is, are there any schools that you're seeing it really build up or is it kind of averaging out amongst our elementary schools?
We have, we have pretty much debt at all 31 locations. Obviously, those amounts differ. Our two Title I schools, we actually don't have a lot of debt, which is kind of odd when you look at it, but because we have so many on free and reduced...
Because it's Title I.
Well, I wish we, I could tell you, we have 100% participation free and reduced. We do not. We probably have about 25% of our free and reduced students district-wide that don't eat with us. And that's a concern that we also look at every year going through reports, calling parents, making sure that they understand they could get a free and reduced lunch from us. But it's, it doesn't, just because somebody has free and reduced lunch, a lot of times doesn't guarantee participation, unfortunately.
Thank you. He's always done a great job at presenting us and I'm really disappointed that we're in the position we're in now.
Ms. Young, you have a question?
Well, actually, when I read the three options, I actually thought about a fourth one and I was thinking about a week myself, but also the fact that the reduced lunch was 40 cents. I thought we should just not try to collect that.
So...
And then, just everybody else collect...
So, we actually, we, we don't collect, all we do for the reduced lunch is we would collect that 80 cents.
No, I was saying, don't go after it.
Forfeit that?
Yeah.
My concern with that would be that we, technically, via the state law, we're supposed to charge 40 cents for breakfast and for lunch.
Okay.
In order to increase participation with our reduced kids, we already purchase a breakfast for everyone. So, we cover the cost of 40-cent breakfast for all of our reduced students throughout the district. So, we are already kind of mitigating our reduced students as is. If we start to cover that 80 for all of them, we could also start to get into a situation. I haven't done a prospect on that and I'd be happy to look at that and send you some figures in terms of covering that reduced debt. I'm not exactly sure what the total would be, but I can certainly take a look at that.
No, the only reason I thought about it is like hunting for that 40 cents.
Yes, ma'am.
Versus and taking the time to get the...
Right. It costs us more than the 80 cents to reach the 80 cents, absolutely.
Correct, yes.
Thank you. Dr. Chase?
I have a little concern about 20 days. As a parent who wanted my children to pack their lunch, if they can just get a lunch for 20 days, I mean, you know, I usually have, have money there for the emergency.
Correct.
So, for me, the 20 days would be, it sort of takes it out of the parent's interaction about what we're doing. So, I, 20 days seems a little, little long to me.
So, our previous policy in place was two days for high school and three days for middle and elementary. And again, the reason that we went to the 20 days is a lot of the issues that we were having with insufficient funding had to relate to pay periods, parents letting us know, you know, there's issues with pay frequency and whatnot. So, that was really the only reason, you know, locally, we do get paid once a month, which for a lot of our hourly folks, they have to budget a little bit more tightly over that four-week window. So, the thought process was just, this would give everybody an opportunity regardless of how frequently they get paid to cover that debt without a mountain of time to have to allow their children to get the cheese sandwich. It was trying to find a decent middle ground there without kind of reverting back to the original because really, at that point in time, we're giving them a couple extra days and it's certainly nice, but if we want to find a nice middle ground, that was kind of the intention of it.
Ms. Hazard?
I would, I would echo what my board members are saying and I first had a question. Mr. Fulmer can say, Mr. Fulmer, in our, in the superintendent's budget request, do we have $32,000 allocated to, because you all have run such a great program that in the past, Mr. Fulmer, do we have a line item for us? Because this was a board policy that we passed. Can, yes or no?
Currently, nothing.
Okay, so that's something...
We're going to have to find the money to fund that. The issue is how do we cut our losses here and reduce this, this hemorrhage that we have? I mean, last year, it was, what, $9,300 for the entire school year? Now, we're not even through half the school year and we're already at $32,000.
Yes.
So, it's only going to increase.
Yes.
And I would just mention that the 20 days also seems very long. I will point out to the board, and poor Mr. Dunbrack got my email today, Ms. Healy, I think I CC'd you, there is a bill tracking through the, in the Virginia Assembly, I believe it's House Bill 1477, that may mandate this in some sense. I would, I will be... that may mandate this in some sense. I will be, as I shared with you, sharing our experience. The date, the number of days, though, that they required, and please know I am not in support as drafted what this legislation could do, it says that we must notify the parent... Or under this, "Any parent who owes money for a meal previously provided of the amount of such debt no later than 10 days after it accrues." I assume they went with kind of maybe like the bi-monthly. I could live with five, but that would work more for me. But I just wanted to share that this legislation... Also, I would also encourage the board that whatever action we can take, if we can have consensus tonight, I would really like to see if we could have this policy go in February 1st to help out Mr. Dunbrack's budget for going forward. It starts at the beginning. But I am very concerned that we start with a clean slate on February 1st. That, to me, is not something I think we can do as a board because then there's this $32,000 sitting. So I know Mr. Dunbrack from a parent who called me, who had an interaction with you or your staff, saying how willing you are. You work with parents. They came to you and they really worked through it. So I know that the office works with people and I think we want to extend that. But I also feel like we have been taken advantage of, so.
I would agree. I would agree. And we do work with anyone that calls us with any type of special considerations. We try very hard to do what we can. You know, we're here to feed kids. So if we're not doing that, it really doesn't justify me standing in front of you guys. So that's my goal.
Mr. McCosker?
Yeah. Okay, so, no, good brief. Yeah, it looks like it's piling up here. 9,000 and then now 27,000. So we've got to do something about it.
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two now.
As of December 31st.
Okay.
Yeah, we just closed out. So we're a little over 32,000, I think, $32,380.
All right, so it looks like you got some, you know, it's 20 days. We talked to, you know, Dr. Chase and some other good options. Now, help me figure this out real quick. So when the student goes into lunchroom, so then, once we get the process tightened up a little bit, okay, here's the policy, here's the process, right? So the student goes into the lunchroom, goes through the line, and then at the end of the line, they say, "You have no money."
Yes, sir.
And then they just dump the food?
They...
Or take the food back?
It's been gone about in different ways in past years. My one of my folks is to remove the tray, not throw it away in front of everybody, just remove it to the back line, get the folks to the other lunch out of our hot box. You know, I really don't like the institutional feel of a cold cheese sandwich. I ask them to wrap it, put it in the hot box, make it as...
Like a grilled cheese, if you will, right?
Essentially, yes, sir. Make it as reasonable as possible to not draw attention to the fact that that's going on, unfortunately. You know, there's not a lot you can do when you see them remove the tray and bring it back. There have been instances in the past where folks have turned around and thrown it in the can and that's unacceptable in my opinion.
So no, and I know you're doing the right thing, but... So what about... How hard would it be just to bring that process to the front of the line?
So the reason that it's not done in the front of the line is because part of the checkout process, it's basically a checks and balances process to make sure that we're serving a compliant meal. And that's one of the things that the state reviewers, when they come through and do our audit, when we're ringing in a meal, we have to make sure that they have the necessary components before we check them out. And that's part of our state review. So that's why it's done that way.
So we don't have the option to bring it to the front of the line?
We don't really have the option because once a kid paid for lunch and then unless we basically doubled our staff to have somebody at the front and at the back to check them on their way out, we could be deemed non-compliant.
Madam Chair? Can we go with Ms. Decatur first?
I did have a question. Mr. McCosker, this is part of another thing that I'm writing down so I don't forget. So I just wanted to clarify because we've all had a lot of comments and questions. If we were to go with option number three, regardless of how many days we decide or, you know, together, would the... We don't want to come up with this 32,000, right?
Correct.
So you would continue to try to collect debt?
Absolutely. Oh, yes.
So at this time, when this is approved, do the students who have outstanding debt just automatically? Or do they have a grace period?
That would be something we'd need to look at in terms of how many... I don't want to use the term habitual offenders, but that's kind of what we've been looking at in terms of who do we have that's kind of grossly in our modified. I can think of a couple students on hand that I've served over 50 modified meals to this year. So we would want to take a look at that because, again, we don't want somebody to come in January 29 and get served and then come in February 1 and all of a sudden be completely cut off and not really understand. So it would be in our best interest probably to communicate to some of those parents that this is going to be taking place and give them some type of window to settle up possibly.
My next question is just as far as, you said compliant meal, and I'm pretty rusty on USDA, but do we still have offer versus serve?
Absolutely. We are offer versus serve, so we have to have options. We have to have five components available every day, a meat or a meat alternative.
But if you went to the serve model, then perhaps you could bring it to the payment to the front of the line? Is that...
So not necessarily. We have to have all five components out, but they're not required to take it. But they're required to take three components, at least one of them being a fruit or vegetable. So we'd still have to have some oversight to make sure that the students were getting what they needed on their trays.
So regardless, the front of the line just unfortunately isn't?
Yeah, unfortunately, that's kind of an industry thing. A lot of us have talked about that, my constituents and myself, in terms of how could we make this work because that would really make sense? It's the compliance piece that kind of throws that off.
Thank you. Ms. Young?
Yeah, my comment was that you would know ahead of time already which students didn't have any funds in their account.
Not necessarily. So we have an online payment system, Meal Pay Plus. Parents can add money on that at any time. So if a mom adds money at, let's say, 7:00 a.m., we might not see it at breakfast and let's say we don't see it at breakfast and the student said a negative and we tell that student they don't have money available. It's very possible a payment could come through before lunch and they could be completely fine account-wise. And we wouldn't know that until we physically went into their account and rang them up. It's a constant fluctuating entity with the online payment, so it's hard for us to set a time where we cut it off or don't cut it off.
Any other questions? All right, this is here for information. Ms. Hazard suggested we consider it for action. Is this something the board wants to consider for action? Before we have a motion for that, we should discuss where we would want to fall on this. I think there's some discussion. I understand your 20 days, but I'm hearing from the board that that may be a bit longer than we'd want because that would take us through the end of February almost.
And that was something that we tossed around, really. Again, the only reason we had set out on the 20 was just for the pay frequency. But we had discussed 10 originally, was our initial thought.
And would February 1st work for a start date with that?
My only concern with that would be the communication, making sure that... And I would have to make sure that we could get out the communication to the parents, just all parents, and informing them of a policy change and also reaching out to those parents of students that would be affected by any type of immediate change.
So would the 10 days start February 1st? Would they get a, you know, they would just start over? Right.
Yeah, I mean, if it starts over, then are we saying that we're going to erase all of the debt?
No, we're not. We would still try to collect it, but...
Absolutely.
Give them the grace period starting February 1st.
So just restart. That's certainly possible.
As far as the meal is concerned.
Right.
Something to consider. I don't know. Is the board interested in taking action on this this evening, moving it to action?
I think as a member of the FABC, I would feel like, I would implore Mr. McCosker. I don't want to step on your...
Sure.
Mr. McCosker, I don't want to step on yours, but this is...
What do you want us to do? Want us to do it tonight or not?
Yes.
I think the sooner we get it done, the better it's going to be for everyone.
Do we... Madam Chair, did the 10 days sound about right to everybody?
Sounded like a happy medium.
Is it option three, 10 days?
It's a lot more than the former policy.
Absolutely.
And somewhere in the middle of what you've suggested. And I think it would... If we start the grace period on February 1st, then it would basically meet your needs because you'd have February 1st. It wouldn't be over until the middle of the month with the weekends and...
And it will give us a couple months to begin to mitigate this amount, hopefully.
And we would want you to continue with the debt collection efforts.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Could I also ask that there be a message sent out to parents with an explanation as to why we must do it this way? I don't want them to just think we just arbitrarily changed our mind about it, but that there's a compelling reason that we have to do this.
There's a large fiscal impact, for sure. That could affect us in other departments where we really don't want to be affected.
Right. So I just want that to be put out there publicly and really feed it to the families. Thanks.
Right, and probably look at what our debt was for the entire prior year versus what it is for half of this year.
Staggering.
Three times, more than three times the debt. Yes.
Can I piggyback on school board member Irene in terms of that message? I know you have a message when they're in debt where you leave a message. I was wondering if you could use that too because those are the individuals...
The automatic call system?
Yeah, those are the ones that are not paying or...
Absolutely. We can... I'll speak with the communications department and see if we can get an auto call out as well.
Yeah.
All right, do we have a motion on this item?
Move to approve 1001 to action.
Move it to... We have to move it.
That's what I'm saying. Move to approve 1001 to action.
That'll work. That works for me.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McCosker. Got to be alert to keep up with this man.
Second.
Second by Ms. Hazard. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Now, do we have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move to approve option one, modified.
Option three.
Option three, option three, modified to say the time period to of 10 days, not 20 days, with standard meal reverting to grilled cheese.
Second.
Okay, do you have a start date for this option to be implemented, February 1st perhaps?
February 1st would be my friendly amendment.
I would ask, when?
You guys want a February 1st? We'll have a February 1st.
I would amend to ask for...
All right, so second is agreeable to that as amendment?
Yes.
All right, so the motion would be to approve the change that would permit a 10-day grace period, after which the modified meal would be required.
Yes, ma'am.
To be implemented effective February 1st with, of course, the advanced notification that has been requested by, you know, Ms. Egan, Ms. Young, and other board members.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Healy, if I could just... Chairman Healy, if I could just say, and that there will still be continued attempt to collect the in arrears monies from the first semester. Okay.
Yes.
Just clarify.
All right, so that's... We have a motion as discussed and revised by...
Will you second?
Did you second? Okay, Mr. McCosker, second by Ms. Egan. Any further discussion? No? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. All right, go forth and...
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
I heard those grilled cheeses are pretty good, actually.
They are a good item.
Thank you. That brings us to our last information item. 10.02, adopt a resolution to support the Stafford County Board of Supervisors legislative initiatives regarding public day schools. This was put on the agenda at the request of Mr... Well, the county administrator's office called last Friday and asked if we could consider this. And there is some urgency in this because it has to do with a resolution that they want us to pass that would be supportive of the position of the county with respect to legislation currently under consideration in Richmond. And if this is held until the next meeting, then it may be too late. And I know Ms. Egan has looked into it for us. Were you able to take a look at it?
I was, but if anybody has any questions, Wendy can probably articulate a little bit deeper if there's some additional questions. This has been something that has been ongoing. Dr. Clark has been working with Donna Kraus and now Wendy's stepped in and she's working with him. So this is something that is going to benefit the county as a whole. So I'll leave it up to you, Dr. Benson, if you want Wendy to come up.
Right, and I understand from Dr. Benson, this is not going to cost us any money and it actually may save the county some money, which in turn, I think, benefits Stafford County Public Schools.
Ms. Healy, my comment... I was on the first committee with this with Ms. Johnson. So I just wanted to mention for everybody, although the resolution, which I do support, is very focused on the costs of the private placement and reducing the county's costs, I'd like to mention that there is another benefit to the public day school, which is keeping our students within Stafford County. And there's more oversight of the student and how they are reaching their IEP goals. Some of the challenges we've had, I believe Ms. Johnson would say, is our oversight of even some of our private day schools. So this is also, I believe, a great look for our students. As long as there's acknowledgement that there's no decrease in general school funding or an attempt to cost share private day school expenditures, I think this is a tremendous opportunity to allow additional state funding of a unique public day school program that allows our students to stay here. So I just wanted to show, I know a lot of it was focused on cost, but there is also that impact on our students. I just wanted to raise that.
Ms. Decatur, I know you have an interest in the private day schools.
I'm itching over here. I just feel that it's important that I say this. So I too sit on the public day school committee and I also do fully support this initiative for, you know, a number of reasons. Just being able to serve our students in a broader capacity, I think it's a wonderful thing, as well as the savings. I think it's important, though, that I mention that my background is with private day schools. And so my concern... And my only concern is that I've seen... I've seen the way that private day schools can give services that public will never be able to provide. And so my only concern with the support of this is seeing... And additionally, I've seen a lot of good teachers start off in private day schools. And in fact, every teacher that I had in my private day school now works for Stafford County. Those who were there went back when I was there before I left. So I just think that it's really important that with my background, I note that there is still a place for private day schools, that they still serve an amazing role in the education of our students. And I would hate to see us not using private day schools only for the cost savings. And so that is my concern. But again, I do support this because, you know, I don't think that that will happen.
Thank you. And I did want to note that this is supporting a pilot program that the legislator would establish. And Stafford County would be one of two counties or jurisdictions in the Commonwealth that would participate in this program. So this isn't by any means permanent. But it is a pilot and I think it would be a privilege to, you know, to be part of that as well. And it is something that the supervisors support. My counterpart, Mrs. Mauer, is on the legislative committee and she, you know, specifically called and asked if we would, you know, consider addressing this today. And she also extended the invitation, which I passed along to Mrs. Hazard and Ms. Egan, to attend the county's, what, 8:30 Friday morning meetings with their lobbyists. So, you know, it's a good communications opportunity. And if this is something the board is willing to consider, I'd ask for a motion to move it to action.
Just one comment. I just wanted to ask if the MOU, was that independent from the pilot?
There is an existing MOU. The pilot is what they're asking us to support at this point.
Okay. And if something, God forbid, something doesn't work, it's not successful, the MOU will be still continuing?
Sure, yeah, sure. The pilot, I assume, is not required in the legislation, would be evaluated by us. And if it's not working, then, you know, we're not going to want to continue it.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to move 10.02 to action.
We have a motion by Ms. Egan, second by Ms. Decatur. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve 10.02.
Motion by Ms. Egan.
Second.
Second by Ms. Hazard. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. All right, we have a... Well, we'll announce that the next regular meeting of the school board is February 13th. However, we do have a work session scheduled for February 10th, which was mentioned earlier. That is at Stafford Hospital. It's open to the public. We're going to start at 9 o'clock. It's scheduled for 3, but it is my sincere hope that we will be out of there before 3 o'clock. We're going to be addressing the budget and the CIP and the calendar. We're going to put that... Maybe we ought to have a lunch discussion of the calendar. That might be a good way to fit that in, but we'll come up with that. Yes, that's right. I suggested the cafeteria, but I was overruled by Mr. McCosker. All right.
I move, Madam Chair, with your permission...
We have a motion for closed session.
I move that the Stafford County School Board convene a closed meeting to discuss and consider acquisition of real property. and consider acquisition of real property pursuant to the real property acquisition exemption in section two dash two, thirty-seven eleven eight three, Code of Virginia.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, we're now in closed session.